This is terrible, speakers. This is this time. This is also a state. I don't know. Isn't that Nina?
That's really, really, really fun. It's really fun.
I don't think our Rose Department has enough to do.
I think it's pretty well inside.
I'll wipe out the ring there before we get it on your papers.
We'll give it one more minute. Saw Lacy's here, didn't she? Saw Commissioner Cruz is here, so we can probably.
Want to wait for her?
She's coming. Morning, Mr. Cruz. Okay, Mr. Manager, we're ready to begin.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. We have a pretty busy agenda this morning just for staff review. We're going to talk about, Ellen's here to talk about court space issues and some new information concerning the budget and the possibility of getting an appellate court here that she wants to talk about. Stephen's here to have a discussion about zones of influence and what the progression of that project is. The fire department is here, Chief's here to talk about fire lane regulations and also wants to just give a quick update on the liberal fire response that we took part in on Sunday. And then I think Commissioner Dennis wants to talk about the Naco trip. I don't know if Commissioner Cruz wants to chime in on that too, so we'll have a little bit of discussion about what they saw in Naco. And then I'll finish it with just a real brief update on our overall COVID-19 response, just a very high level summary of that. So with that, there are no questions. Ellen, you. Is Ellen here?
Yes, she is.
Morning, Ellen. Welcome.
Good morning. Ellen House District Court Administrator. I wanted to take the opportunity this morning to update you on a couple of issues that are going on up in Topeka and also how that affects our space. And then I know last time I was before you, there were some questions as to why you're responsible for our space, and so I thought it might be just a good opportunity to run through why we're here and why you have the bill for us. So, let's start. So, our nearly immediate space needs. Currently, as of this morning, the Kansas Legislature is considering a budget that includes judicial officers for across the state. We have a lobbyist up there working very hard this morning lobbying for one magistrate for this district. And if approved, that position could be appointed anytime after July 1st of this year. And that position's important to this district because it is essential for us to start a Veterans Court here. And I know that's an important topic for the county. The next thing that is a nearly immediate space need, there are, before the governor, three finalists for the open Court of Appeals position. Two of those finalists are from Wichita. Should one of those women be appointed to the Court of Appeals, I fully expect we will receive a space request for that position and their staff, just like we have Judge Powell and his law clerk in the courthouse. Based upon this statute 20-163, I expect that we will get that request from the new Court of Appeals judge, should they come from Wichita. Next thing is a little outside the courts, but still very essential to our functions. The courts and the district attorney, we work very, very closely together to try to figure out how we can get these cases through the courts as quickly as possible, the criminal cases. I know last year I talked to you about the fact that in between 2018 and 2019, the cases' filings were up in criminal seven and a half percent. I got the numbers for end of February yesterday, and for January and February of 2020, they're already up 26% over January and February of 2019. I talked with Mark this morning, and you know, he wanted to make sure that you all knew that he doesn't just file cases for fun. I mean, he files what is given to him. I mean, crime is up that much, and it's serious crime. There we have over 133 pending off-grid felonies. There's 88 murder cases, 52 rape cases, 62 innocent liberty cases. These are very serious crimes. And so what we are proposing, or what we have talked about together, is that we could expand the IAD process, which is the initial assessment docket. That's where when a case is filed with the DA, the DA looks at that case, they look at the criminal history of the person, and they say, okay, this is a case we can plea. And they immediately, at the time of charging, they immediately get with the public defender's office or the defense attorney and say, here's a plea. And they try to work that out so that, boom, it's gone. If we could expand that, we think we can get rid of some of the lower-level crimes so that the DAs can focus on the more serious level crimes, but there's no space. And so, I just wanted to make that point that it's a lot more than just a new judge or a new magistrate. I mean, it's just our criminal system in general. The spatial relationship between the county and courts, there's three statutes that really govern it, 20-301, 20-348, and 20-380. We'll look at all those here in a minute. I just wanted to point out those three. 20-301, it just states that there shall be a district court in each county. 20-348 lays out the responsibility for the county commissioners to fund that court. It says, except for expenses required by law to be paid by the state. Those expenses are state employee salary and benefits, except for the cases, or excuse me, the employees who are state employees but are paid by the county. And we'll talk about those a little bit later. Under the 18th Judicial Court, our umbrella includes the District Court General Fund, the Court Trustee, and then ADSAP. And the statutory requirements for the county to pay under administration are jury fees, interpreter fees, transcript fees, law library fees, witness fees, indigent and defense fees. And then we get to court services, which is our probation officers. And there's a statute that governs the expenses for them. The clerk of the court has various statutes that require the county to pay certain expenses for the clerk of the court. One of them is 38-2237. That's a major line item you'll see in our budget each year, and that is the service by publication every time we have a child in need of care case that requires publication to potential parents and potential family members. The other big one for the clerk is the reproduction and preservation of court records. We spend approximately $52,000 a year, I believe, at the salt mines up in Hutchinson, and that is for the storage of records. We have a legal requirement to keep records for up to 100 years in some cases. And we started scanning documents in 2000, no, excuse me, 1993. But the courts went on for a long time before then, and so we have all sorts of original filings that are stored at the salt mine. Another item in our budget that is governed by statute is our parenting classes. And then we get to the court trustee. It's a non-tax fund, but it's still, we have close to 60 employees in the court trustee's office. And 20-377, it lays out the appointment of the court trustee. And then 20-359 talks about district court officers and employees whose salary is payable by a county. These are the employees who, they're state employees, but their paycheck comes through Sedgwick County. It's 100% funded by their own fees. There's no cost to the taxpayers, but it's by statute, it's the mechanism that they get paid. It comes through the county, so it lays out that requirement. And then it also talks about setting up a special fund with the county treasurer. And then finally, our Alcohol and Drug Safety Action Program, ADSAP, is a statutory fund also that you will find in our budget. The little pie wedge that's 18.71% other, this is our total budget, and as you can tell, everything except for that blue, that light blue pie wedge is statutorily required expenses to be paid by the county. And so I just wanted to do a brief overview of why we come before you and why you're expected to pay for district court. The last thing I want to discuss with you is the historic courtroom. I know there's been some discussion about why we don't use it on a regular basis. It actually is kind of used on a regular basis. County Court is held there weekly. The Kansas Department of Revenue holds their driver's license hearings at least once a month. The Court of Appeals uses it infrequently, but then we also use it as overflow or emergency courtroom. In fact, we're using it right now, two days a week for small claims since they're displaced from the fourth floor. The chairs in the courtroom are very fragile. They're very old, they're very historic, but as you can see, this one on the end, we can't even use because it's broken. This one won't stay up. Somebody can still sit there, though. This is a picture of the back of a chair. We use this courtroom daily during the fifth-floor remodel, close to 20 years ago, 15 years ago, and the courtroom took a lot of abuse. People are not kind. They sit there, they're bored, they start carving in the back of chairs, and they kind of destroy what is historic and, in my opinion, should be preserved. Do you have any questions for me that I could answer?
The magistrate, if it is approved July 1st, would be effective? How fast would we have to? What's the timeframe after July 1st?
Well, Judge and I have talked about this quite a bit, and we would work with you, and we would ask that maybe it be postponed until we can find suitable space for them because we want to be good partners with you in finding that space.
Okay. Appreciate it.
I have a question.
A question?
So, what sort of research have we done since the last conversation we had about a Veterans Court as far as how many people would be served?
I knew that number at one point. May I get back with you on that?
Sure.
Okay.
And I guess I just got a comment. We've been kicking this can down the road for a long time. I've already said it the last time we had our space needs meeting, that at some point we need to make a decision, but we don't seem to be able to make a decision. We've got five commissioners and probably got eight ideas of what we need to do. But at some point, we need five commissioners to come together and say we got one idea and start moving forward with something because we just can't keep kicking this can down the road.
Commissioner O'Donnell, thank you. In regards to space needs, is there any way we could, Mr. Chairman, you could direct staff to start looking for a home, at least for the Elections Department? Is that something that we think we're about ready to, we could make some moves on to create some space in the historic courthouse?
Well, I think that, yeah, I mean, some of these, call them babyships or immediate things we could do, I believe, is something like that, to start looking.
What would we need to do to at least start with that?
Commissioner, I can meet with Steve Martins, our on-call broker, and start to ask him to look at available sites out there for elections. We have an understanding of what their space needs are, both square footage and, you know, for office and warehouse, so I can have him start to look at availability. We do have one site in particular that we were kind of focused on, and we can look at that a little bit further for the Elections Office.
And others too would be the.
Correct, yes.
Is that something that you can gauge the temperature on with the commissioners so that we can go ahead and start that? Because I think there's probably unanimous support and acknowledgement that the Election Office is in need, and we could get some space in the historic courthouse for the court system potentially.
I agree. I know when you mentioned Martins, as soon as he goes out and starts looking at properties, and they know that Sedgwick County needs it, the price of that's going to go sky-high because they know that we're looking. So I don't know what method we can use rather than saying Martins is going out looking at this property, but I don't want to get it jacked up just because we're Sedgwick County.
I don't have to disclose what property we're looking at. I mean, I understand your fears. I mean, that's a concern of mine too, but I mean, that's why we do things. We just don't have to disclose what property we're looking at.
And I had a conversation with him also, and he doesn't necessarily disclose who is looking at these buildings, but he said, you know, once we start to tour the buildings and he sees, you know, who's touring, that's when they, you know, we start to understand who's looking at the buildings. But he said he can have a conversation and start to reach out to these owners and not necessarily disclose, again, who's looking at these buildings. And so I think we can, again, reach out to who's selling these buildings and just say, you know, we have an interested party and start to have those conversations.
Well, this would be a big movement if we can at least get agreement on that piece.
And at least he can raise options or he can raise options.
Yes.
Okay.
One last thing I just want to say. I think it's easier for me to tackle and to understand if we do it piece by piece. You know, talking about all of these moving pieces, I think that's a lot for everybody to wrap their brains around, and this, to me, seems like a good way to move forward as far as one step in the right direction.
Along that line, I agree with Commissioner O'Donnell. I think it's a good next step, but I would like to have us contemplate if that space was available, what would we do with it? And does that provide some solution to the challenges we're seeing in the court system or the DA's base? I'd like to know what we would do with that space and how that kind of fits our problem statement. So, just a final comment, I don't know how many times in the last couple of years we've had the courts come up and present similar to you have today. And I appreciate your needs, and I'm glad you're being very transparent and letting us know, I think, honestly what you really need, but it seems like the story continues to change. I mean, this is a kind of a new thing today, and we just talked literally a month ago on court needs, and this wasn't part of the discussion a month ago. So, I think the court situation, what the court's needs are, it seems to be somewhat dynamic, and I don't know how we put a line in the sand and say, we're going to settle on some total plan that really meets the needs going into the future forever. I mean, I find this is a little bit frustrating to me because I feel like we continue to have a dynamic discussion on the court's needs, and I don't know how to settle that down a little bit.
The court's needs are very fluid. We have things come up that aren't expected even to us. I think that's why it is important that we not only build out what we think we need next year, but that we build in extra because we need that flexibility for if we get another judge or if the DA is able to hire more staff to do the IAD docket. We need space for those sorts of things to happen. And so, when we look at asking for space and asking you to build space, we're going to ask you to build space for people we don't have yet in anticipation of the needs because we see nothing but growth. That's one thing that is very constant. We never see our numbers go down. Our numbers just continue to rise. Sometimes they rise faster than we expect, but they continue to rise.
I'll just add in on that comment. To some degree, we get into the business of trying to predict crime rates, and that's hard to do, but I agree with Ellen. I think the numbers point to nothing but up until we have something drastic on criminal justice reform or some type of dynamic shift at a state or national level to deal with this situation. But for the short term, and when I say short term, the next 10 years, it's nothing but growth for not only the courts but for the DA and to some degree for the sheriff. So, that's how we, and Commissioner Cruz, back to your, I agree that a phased approach makes a lot of sense. I do think we need an overarching comprehensive plan that is phased in bytes to where as we move, we can do one phase at a time and then assess. As a commission, you guys can assess whether we progress on or deviate or change. I do think there needs to be an overarching, somewhat strategic plan, and I'm loud and clear on the Election Office. I think all five of you feel that way, so we'll get started on that double time.
I just want to say one more thing. I understand that, you know, the court system is maxed out, it's only expected to increase, but what are we doing on the flip side to keep people out of our court system? And so, as the Mental Health Coalition, we have three task forces now. We're really working to reduce addictions, which leads to crime, and those kinds of things. So I just want to reiterate that, that we do have an opportunity to sort of shift our mentality now that the community is paying attention as far as trying to understand mental health needs to keep people out of our court system. Will that happen overnight? No, but I think as long as we have this court discussion, I'm going to be here talking about what we can do to reduce mental health problems, addiction problems that lead to people going to our court system in the first place.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Ellen. Stephen's going to come up and talk about zones of influence now, and while he's getting ready, I'll just give you a little backdrop on this. Commissioners in a few years ago made some decisions to reduce zones of influence of class two and three cities in the county. There's been some discussion of whether those should be increased or not, or restabilized or brought back, and I don't know that we have unanimous feelings on the commission. So I just wanted Stephen to talk through today, kind of describe what these are and show you maps of where they exist, and then we'll listen to whatever you discuss as involving. So, Stephen?
Morning, Commissioners. Stephen Banks, Metropolitan Planning. This map, and you have all these in the handout, but this map is what existed with the, what were called zoning areas of influence at the time in 2015. Whoops. Which button? Do I scroll it or? Okay. In October of 2015, the Commission voted four to one to have the urban area of influence coincide with the urban growth areas of the Wichita and Sedgwick County Comprehensive Plan. And the term zoning area of influence was done away with, we actually use the term urban area of influence now. Since then, there have been a couple of amendments, and this is the map we currently have within the Comprehensive Plan. The light blue and the sort of gold or darker yellowish areas are those urban areas of influence that coincide with the urban growth areas.
Do you just, for mine and Commissioner Cruz's help as well? So, go back to that map real quick, please. So just, for instance, you're saying, like the darker brown or the darker gold above maize, what's the difference between that gold and then the lighter gold just south of that?
Okay, the lighter gold or yellow is actually the Wichita urban area. That's sort of the service area that was set up through the Water and Sewer Department did some plans back in 2012 and said, these are the areas we could serve in the future.
For water and.
Mm-hmm.
For growth, okay. Okay, that helps.
But that urban growth area, we don't actually call that an urban growth area for Wichita. It is just classified a little differently from the other communities.
Clear as mud, thank you.
Okay. In October this, last year, we were asked to look at expanding the urban area of influence for each of the communities in Sedgwick County, and invitations were sent out, and they were given time to confer with their planning commissions, elected officials, staff, et cetera. And they were asked to look at their growth patterns, subdivision activity, their comprehensive plans. Some of the communities were already revising theirs, as well as their capacity to expand infrastructure and other things, including landowner and developer interest. Nine cities expressed interest in expanding their urban area of influence. Among those Derby, Hayesville, Mulvane, Cheney, and Garden Plain had fairly simple requests to expand their areas based upon provision of infrastructure, and their proposals were largely consistent with their comprehensive plans or what they were planning to do with those plans or in the process of doing. Goddard has, was another city that proposed expansion. They're continuing to work with us and are looking at revising their Comprehensive Plan currently. They are wanting to do some major expansions. They currently have service out to all of their current growth areas, and they have issues in their area with the Northwest Bypass. There's also the Wichita-Sedgwick County Detention Facility at 13th Street North and 167th Street West that is an issue in the area that they are proposing. And they've acknowledged to the City of Wichita that there does need to be discussions, but we have not been able to arrange a meeting thus far with them. A meeting also needs to take place between Goddard and Garden Plain. The large format map that you have has an addition that came up actually last Wednesday. Garden Plain City Council decided to expand their request a little bit more to the east. We'll talk about that in a moment. So, and Goddard, as I mentioned, is revising their Comprehensive Plan. Keachai, they're not providing infrastructure to the area they're requesting, but they have had a lot of ag business development within the area along Hillside from, I think it's 101st down to 85th Street, a lot of interest in there. They are wanting to keep more tabs on that. They do provide some maintenance of township roads. They actually pay to have those areas within their city limits maintained, but other than that, they don't have capacity to provide their gas or water service into that area. Valley Center brought their proposal to us very late in the process. They are in fact a 10th city now, and they've been receiving some developer inquiries. They are also looking at taking a more aggressive expansion effort of their water service. However, the expansion of, into the area they're talking about includes a lot of floodplain area around the Little Arkansas River and the Wichita Valley Center flood control facility. Mount Hope and Andale, their proposal was a little bit more complex in that while their. So, and Goddard, as I mentioned, is revising their comprehensive plan. Keachai, they're not providing infrastructure to the area they're requesting, but they have had a lot of ag business development within the area along Hillside from, I think it's 101st down to 85th Street, a lot of interest in there. They are wanting to keep more tabs on that. They do provide some maintenance of township roads. They actually pay to have those areas within their city limits maintained. But other than that, they don't have capacity to provide their gas or water service into that area. Valley Center brought their proposal to us very late in the process. They are, in fact, a 10th city now, and they've been receiving some developer inquiries. They are also looking at taking a more aggressive expansion effort of their water service. However, the expansion of, into the area they're talking about includes a lot of floodplain area around the Little Arkansas River and the Wichita Valley Center flood control facility. Mount Hope and Andale, their proposal was a little bit more complex in that while their interests are a little bit different, their urban area of influence, as they would like to call it, is more of a concern than their growth area. Mount Hope is very happy with the growth area that is on the map currently. As far as actual growth of their city, they're not really expecting to see that exceeded within the Comprehensive Plan 2035 horizon. Andale does want to expand their growth area somewhat as a result of developer, landowner interests, as well as some activities occurring with the school district there. But in terms of urban area of influence, they wanted to see the whole area of the township that they reside in as their urban area of influence. When we took this to the Advanced Plans Committee back in February, they rejected the township-wide urban area of influence idea as being not related to the provision of infrastructure and other services, that it would be too expansive. So this is the map that we have currently, with the exception, the large, the 11 by 17 map that you have has a change to what is showing here. The north side of Kellogg are 454, and then to the two miles south of Kellogg to the east, you'll see an area that, on that map, that is both crosshatched green and red. So there needs to be some discussion between the communities to iron that out. But Goddard, I mean, Garden Plain has a very cohesive community, basically one school, one church, very much tied together, and people in those areas feel very tied to Garden Plain, and that was what was expressed at their city council meeting and what they expressed to us last Thursday.
Before we get off of that map, can you go back, please? So what's the difference between Keachai and Valley Center up there surrounding Park City? Can we have a different color so we understand who is what? Because that's confusing to me.
Okay. Keachai is, their current growth area is the blue, and the green is their expansion area. Park City is not proposing any change to their growth area.
My question is, Valley Center is on the left, and so Keachai is on the right? So that's Keachai all the way up there?
Yes, and yes, and Valley, and Park City goes up between the two.
Yeah, I'm aware of that.
Yeah.
But, okay.
Yeah.
If in the future, could we make that so that there is a distinction between those two?
Well, we could do more colors to try to vary, yeah.
I don't think I'm the only one that has that question. That's my question. I mean, those are really sort of surrounding there. I mean, what is it, a block or a mile section?
Mile section, mm-hmm.
Could we do that? Would that be possible?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So on March 5th, the Advanced Plans Committee did decide to forward this on to the MAPC for them to set a public hearing on March 19th. That would, that public hearing would actually occur on April 23rd. So the 19th, all they are doing is setting the date for the public hearing. And then we would expect to bring this to you for consideration in early June, and because it is a joint city-county comprehensive plan, the City of Wichita would see it after that.
All right, Stephen, thanks for this update. So there's 19 or 20 ci, 19 cities, and you're saying there are nine of them about want to expand?
Ten, ten, actually. Valley Center came to us late.
Are the nine are just silent on it, or they don't want to expand?
Yeah, they're pretty satisfied with the growth areas. I think we've seen kind of a change since 2015 in terms of assessing the capacity that each of these communities have. They've taken a much closer look, and they've been pretty much satisfied with their area. It seems to have worked thus far.
Okay. What other questions?
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to discuss why that this even was a request. I had several of the cities in my district, and if you look, the major number, a large group of the cities in Sedgwick County are in my district. And they had a concern that we shrank their area of influence, turned it into kind of an urban area here a few years ago, and all I asked for was a review and to hear what the different communities had to say. And that's what I appreciate happening, is that we're hearing what the communities have to say. We need to be responsive to what those individual communities wants and needs are out there. I realize that when this was shrunk down, that some of these areas of influence were way larger than they would ever grow into in a million years, and so some reductions did need to take place. But in some cases, some reductions were made that were pretty significant. So I just thought it was time, after a few years, to take a look at it and listen to what the communities have to say about their areas, and I appreciate the process that you've gone through to get to this point.
One question, just can you pull up a big map, please?
Sure.
Just for mine. So let's just take maybe one's easier to look at, Derby area?
Yeah.
So the existing area is the darker brown, and the proposed area, because that's Derby that's expanding.
Okay, the darkest area shows their city limits, and the sort of goldish color is their existing...
Existing.
Urban growth area. They actually had a very small request, and it...
Is that the green area?
Well, the green area is Mulvane's, but if you follow that green area along 95th Street on the map, there's a small red hatch area.
I see that.
Yeah. That's their request. And basically, what that does is it brings their area in conformance with their plans, as well as the Derby and Mulvane growth plan that they worked on together, which sort of established 95th as a dividing line, except for that little area. So they're just bringing it in conformance with their comp plan and that plan.
Okay, so it's the lined parts or the growth areas on this?
The lined areas are the expansion of the growth areas.
Okay, thank you for explaining. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Commissioner, questions? Thank you, Chairman. I am curious, when we decided to go and approach these cities, what was the, what was the, how did that decision get made? Did someone ask you to make that invitation?
Yes. Well, Dell came to me and said, he had a request from the Commissioners, you all, and that we wanted to, they wanted to, you wanted to have this explored.
We called voting on that, but...
We did.
Okay.
Let me go back. I actually asked Kniebel if we could look at this, and this was way last summer. And I went back to him a couple months later and said, how's it coming? And he said, well, you haven't voted on it. I said, well, at the time I asked you, you didn't tell me we had to vote on it. And so then I asked for it to bring, be brought back to the entire commission so we could vote on it. So we did vote on it.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine, I appreciate that. The history of this, and I think that the first map you showed us had the green boxes.
Yes.
This does, I believe this shows two boundaries. One of these is the zoning area of influence, and the other one's the urban area of influence. Is that correct?
Uh...
It's titled zoning area of influence.
Yes. The green areas are the zoning area of influence.
Prior to October 2015?
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
And so we had two boundaries, and I think the way we handled cases that were outside the urban area but inside the zoning area, they were handled slightly differently. There was a different process in terms of...
In terms of notification, this was what we went by, the zoning area of influence. At that time, the urban growth area was simply a projection for the comprehensive plan where they expected to grow. It really didn't have a lot to do with notification at the time.
Okay. Just so everyone understands the history of this, the proposal back in the day, back in October 2015, and in fact, the months preceding that, and I went and looked at the articles to remind myself, and read the minutes of the meeting that happened in October, there was a proposal to eliminate this entirely. And I think under state law, if someone could please remind us what state law requires, in 1985, I think when we went to zoning, countywide zoning, there is, you know, requirements for how we handle zoning cases and the unincorporated. And I don't know that any of this is required. I think this, I don't know exactly what the state law requires. I guess I may ask the question that way. What does state law require?
Commissioner Howard, Justin Wagner, Assistant County Counselor. The urban area of influence, formerly the zoning area of influence, that's a creature of our own zoning code. It's not specified in state law.
But back before we made the change, we used to actually, the process was a little bit slower, and it required the local city, we use the word "small city," and I hate to use that word because some of the small cities don't like that phrase, and I don't want, I don't mean to offend them in any way, but just to understand, we're not talking Wichita. So using the term "small city." The small cities were required, then, if they wanted to speak to the issue, they'd have to have their own hearing, they'd have their own presentation, and they would actually have to provide a vote for MAPC to go forward. That was a pre, a decision had to be made by a small city before MAPC could process that request. Is that correct?
Well, I'll try to answer the question in pre-2015 and then how it is now. Before 2015, and Scott, or Stephen can correct me if I'm getting any of this wrong, but our, if you had a zoning case in the zoning area of influence, now referred to as the urban area of influence, and the small, the city would, if their planning commission would recommend against that zoning case, it could require, in some cases, at least the original go-around at the county commission level, would require a unanimous vote to override it. And then if it would be referred back to the planning commission and then back to the governing body, if I remember correctly, I think it would require a supermajority.
Right.
That was, that was pre-2015.
So I can summarize the changes that were made at that time. Basically, we got rid of what we called the zoning area of influence, and the urban growth areas became, if you will, the notification area that requires, if you will, the cities to speak to those issues. And so, for example, and if I understand correctly, they don't have to speak to it now, they're certainly invited to. If they choose not to speak to it, it can still move forward. I believe that's the way it is today.
That's correct.
Back in that, back in the day, that was a requirement that had, they had to vote on that. So that was one change. And then going from a unanimous vote, it went down to a supermajority, and in fact, MAPC had, I think, five meetings where they recommended, if you will, some of these changes. The one thing we changed on the county commission was, we had a declining vote requirement, if it comes to us a second time, going from a supermajority down to a simple majority on the second bite of the apple. So we could essentially process the issue forward, because there was, there was times that maybe you couldn't find a fourth vote to do either, you know, to either send it back or to approve it. So a third vote, sometimes we'd get that thing resolved and we could process that issue forward. So we had a couple of changes. We went from two boundaries down to one. We simplified the process. We certainly invite the cities to speak to the issue, but they don't have to speak to the issue if they don't want to. In fact, I think at the time, we had some, we had some data, even for the city of Derby, I believe they had four cases in over five years that they felt were contentious, that were inside that urban growth area, that they had presented, if you will, you know, some type of vote to MAPC. So it was, it's not like this happens all the time. Some of the other arguments about this was, if you look at some of the things that are being proposed here, some of these, some of these distances are sometimes up to four miles from the city. In fact, they're bigger, the boundary's bigger than the city itself in some cases. And so that's, that is a concern, talks about disenfranchising these voters because, or disenfranchising these property owners, because they potentially could have opposition from a city, but they have no ability to influence who sits on, sits in those seats. They can't vote for them, they can't, again, if it's a planning commission, they can't, the appointments of those people who sit in those seats made by the elected officials, they can't vote for those officials because they are outside the city. So there's an issue of disenfranchisement that was one of the arguments, I guess, for making change here. And when we talk about property rights, this was certainly something we were concerned about. So at the end of the day, what we ended up with was not what was, the commissioner that presented all this, that wanted to eliminate all of this, voted against it, just FYI. And the other four commissioners voted for it. In fact, I have an article here I'll share with my colleagues. We were, we were essentially praised, I thought, for a very balanced and fair compromise. And I think everybody was pretty happy. And since we passed this in October, please correct me if I'm wrong, we have adjusted the zoning, I shouldn't say, urban growth area, we've adjusted that a few times from some cities by their request. So any city that wants to propose, if you will, making a change, could have, could have gone to MAPC or to the county commission and initiated the process to adjust their growth area. That's something that's happened several times since October 2015. So this idea that we have to initiate a countywide adjustment, you know, with numerous cities at the same time, frankly, is unnecessary. Any one of those cities could have brought to us a request to adjust those growth limits, those growth, growth boundaries at any time. In fact, several of them have done so. So this entire thing, in my opinion, is unnecessary, and any city who wants to grow simply needs to make that request if they've, now they've made the request, I think we ought to process those, obviously. But I am concerned about such a large boundary, that is sometimes as many as four miles from a city, that disenfranchises someone and takes the property rights away potentially, and that distance is sometimes much larger than the city, than the city itself. And I just think that sometimes we've got to be real careful. When you ask the governing body, do you want more power or more influence, the answer's going to always be yes. So when we ask them...
This is the old one.
I understand that.
This is the proposed. There's a whole lot of difference between the old one and the proposed.
I don't think there's much difference as you do. I think that this is, they mimic each other.
Mimic each other. Can you see the difference between these two? Take a look at Mount Hope.
Okay.
Four or five miles outside in the past, now it's just around the city.
Anyway, per their request, if they want to adjust it, anytime they can, and we've always welcomed that, and so they have done that in the past. Now that we have these requests, I think we ought to process them, obviously. But to, for the future, any city that needs to adjust their boundaries, obviously needs to start the process of the discussion.
But they did. They asked me.
Okay.
I'm a commissioner. I have half the county. They come to me and ask me if we can look at it. I asked our planning department, went through the proper procedures. Now you're saying that we're not doing it right?
And we, as a department, have gone to the cities usually every year or every other year to ask, you know, are there any considerations for this, you know, that you're wanting to undertake? Because we'd rather process a set of them at a time than each one individually and bring, you know, several cases to you in a year's time, bring one case that updates two or three cities. Commissioner Don?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The timeline that Commissioner Dennis gave is correct. I actually think it started three years ago, not just two years ago. I think it was the first year you and I were up here, actually, that you started this conversation. Does that sound right? We were working on this three years. And Commissioner Dennis is right, he's obviously the resident expert on planning, being the planning chairman two different years on his times on the MAPC. I did reach out to my mayors after Commissioner Dennis brought it up, and they did ask for a compromise plan, which I think this is what staff brought up. So, yeah, I'm very supportive of this. I, yeah, but I do remember the timeframe that Commissioner Dennis is referring to. I just think, I just think the difference is, he's been working on it three years and not just two. think, I just think the difference is, he's been working on it three years and not just two years. So I appreciate staff taking the time and, most importantly, getting the feedback from the cities, so this was not just a, this was commission-initiated, but this was not commission-driven, county commission-initiated but not county commission-driven, is that correct?
Yeah.
You got the feedback from the cities.
We got this, yes.
This final plan is based on what you heard from the cities. I just wanted to make sure that was on record.
We spent a lot of time going out to each of the cities and talking about their concerns and so forth.
Well, that's what I heard from, but I only have two cities outside Wichita in my district, so that's why I just wanted to make sure that that is out there. The cities, this is what the cities requested, not what the county requested for the areas of influence, correct?
Well, we asked them, yes, what they wanted.
Right, right. I just want to make sure that's on the record, that this is what the cities wanted, not, we're not deciding this for the cities, this is what the cities requested.
Have I given you any direction whatsoever through this entire process?
No.
Ask you to expand anything whatsoever?
No, no.
Okay.
Have I had one discussion with you on this entire process, other than asking?
No, no. We went out and asked them, what would you propose? We got, we took this to the advance plans three times, asking for their input as well on the process, and have continued, you know, working with the cities.
Well, it looks like there's a, your last slide shows there's upcoming dates for a lot of input from the planning commission to the, probably the cities could attend, and anybody in the public, and anybody can say, so there is, this isn't the decision day, but I appreciate the update, historically and everything else, anything, okay, all right. Okay, well, thank you again, appreciate this. Next up.
Chief, if you want to go ahead and get ready to talk about fire lane regulations, this is a discussion that some commissioners wanted to have concerning current regulations to build driveways between, out in residential and commercial properties in Sedgwick County, and the level of restrictiveness or requirement for that. So the fire staff is here today to discuss that regulation with you.
Good morning, manager, Board of County Commission and staff. My name is Robert Timmons, I work for Sedgwick County Fire District One, and I'm the Division Chief of Fire Prevention, which is the division of our department that does a lot of the code work, the plans review, and Chapter 12, the service drive code falls under our jurisdiction for inspection purposes. We've been asked to present and provide some information to you about what, how the service drive code came about and what it actually is. Prior to 2003, most of the code departments were under, we were under the Uniform Fire Code, the other codes were under various unified codes. A big event took place around 2003 is when the ICC came out with the International Fire Code and got a lot of the code departments kind of in sync with each other, to where we didn't have conflicting codes. But the problem identified during this timeframe was that in relation to the service drive code, Sedgwick County Code Enforcement, the floodplain managers and the fire department were not on the same page. And the result were homeowners were getting into the middle of a project and then finding out from a different department that there was requirements that they were not made aware of. Commissioner, at the time, Betsy Gwynn, received a complaint about a requirement for a bridge to get through a Dry Creek floodplain area, and she approached the former fire marshal about it. And through the discussions that came about, a working group, multi-agency working group was formed with the task of getting all this information together, getting, creating one document, which would be the service drive code, and make a system to where the builder or the owner had all the information of what the requirements were for the rural roadway prior to starting the project. That's the members of the various agencies that went into and spent considerable amount of time to make sure that all issues were addressed from all the different departments, including the city of Wichita and Wada. The goal of the, like I said before, the goal was to communicate and coordinate and get the information to the contractor slash homeowner, so that they could make good decisions and have financial impacts prior to getting in the middle of a project, as well as providing a process for inspection that was timely, because prior to this code being adopted in '04, those driveways are still grandfathered and we're not forced to come into compliance. And so the inspection process, we needed a fail-safe on the new projects to where if they were not in compliance, there was a mechanism to halt things. We couldn't wait till the final occupancy inspection, because that would create a hardship on the people as well. So we, part of the committee came up with, at the time of framing inspection, which is the time that the actual framing is up and built and it's considered a structure, that is when the inspection of the service drive, because that would be when both the insurance companies and the banks would have the expectation that a fire truck could gain access to the property. And in 2004, the Board of County Commission did adopt the service drive code and made it an addition to Chapter 12 of the Sedgwick County Code. The part of when required is actually determined at the time of building permit is pulled at MABCD. MABCD will take a look at the GIS mapping, see where the house is going to be located, measure to see the distance from the county roadway or the township roadway, and if any part of the structure is beyond 200 feet, then they would also provide that builder or that homeowner with the service drive application, information about the service drive code, and that way they would be informed. Floodplain issues are also addressed pretty close during this time with MABCD. The basic requirements on a primary structure are the 20 feet in width. Accommodations were made for accessory buildings, and the width was reduced as there would not be a kitchen or sleeping quarters or people inhabiting the accessory structures. So there's still an expectation for fire protection and getting apparatus in there because combines, tractors, there's still hundreds of thousands of dollars inside of some of these outbuildings. And banks and insurance companies have an interest in being able to get a fire truck to those structures, but the onus on life safety with the primary service drive being remained at 20 feet. We have a lot of inclement weather, and so there is a requirement in the code for an all-weather driving surface. Rock, gravel, it can also be, what's getting popular now is the recycled concrete. A lot of the contractors that put these in are using the recycled concrete and then putting a top coat over them to keep the dust and stuff down when it's driven on. Here's an example of a service drive leaving the mile road, and it's 20 feet wide, and it allows for vehicle two-way traffic, whatnot. One of the things on these service drives, the service drive can serve up to three residences. So not just fire apparatus coming and going at the same time, but there could be neighbors coming and going at the same time, and that 20-foot width allows them to pass, as well as us to get apparatus in and out of the property. This part was taken out of the International Fire Code in the discussion, and at the time, 46,000 pound was the average, was determined to be the average weight of fire apparatus. Beginning of this year, we just adopted the 2018 International Fire Code, and they've raised that because apparatus is getting heavier and longer, and they've raised the requirement to 75,000 pounds for all-weather driving surface. However, we have not seen a big issue with trucks getting stuck when the driveways put in with the four inches of compacted rock, so we did not, we have not addressed that with, about updating this code, because we just haven't experienced the problems of our trucks getting stuck. There's a requirement in the service drive for vertical clearance. This includes if the gate has a upper bar across it, or if there's trees, hedgerows alongside of it, to maintain 13/6 vertical clearance in order to protect our apparatus from having the light bars torn off the top of them, or the other equipment on top of the rigs getting torn off. Here's an example of one of the gates, and it has adequate vertical clearance so that we can get through it safely and not damage any apparatus or the gates. On the gates, there is a 30-foot setback from the edge of the township or county road, and the purpose for that is twofold. A, it allows our vehicles to swing the big circle and kind of get lined up before going through the pillars, as well as, most of these gates are locked at night, and even during the daytime, so it allows us to get the majority, if not all, of our apparatus off the mile roadway, out of harms' way and out of not causing a traffic problem, to where we get out and we either cut, if it's a chain, we'll cut the chain and preserve the lock. Some of these folks will put a security box that we have a key to, and some of them have siren-activated gates, but by having the gate setback off the roadway, it does allow us to get the majority of our apparatus off the road and keep the mile road open. Here's an example of the concrete pillars and all that. If those are right out on the mile road, trying to get that, one of our apparatus to turn that corner and try to go through those concrete pillars at an angle, is very difficult and subjects us to risk of paying for somebody's property damage or fixing our apparatus if that occurs. But by offsetting them back off the roadway, it both protects the residence property as well as our apparatus. Once again, I explained earlier, if there's floodplain issues, we work with MABCD on this, they actually identify the initial problem, then there's a survey company that's sent out by the homeowners, will have to have that done. The paperwork is filed, correct me if I'm wrong, back with MABCD so that it's a record of what the elevation of the service drive needs to be, so that it remains above water, so that our apparatus is driving down it, can see where the roadway is and not drive off into the unknown. And then, once again, when we get the notification from MABCD of an inspection, before I send an inspector out, we pull it up on GIS, look at the floodplain, and then we take a look at the road and see if it's still at the same level as the dirt around it, or if it's been elevated, and communicate back with MABCD if we have any questions or issues. We did call four contractors that put in service drives. Only two of them returned or called with information. Company A, their cost projections include a 30-foot culvert, six inches, which is in excess of the code, of recycled concrete and a two-inch top coat. And if mine, it's kind of early for my mathematical brain, but $43,000 per 100-foot of, is that correct? Or am I, anyway, yeah. So it is, there is a cost to it, but at the same time, they are putting a home at the end of this with lives in it, and there's an expectation that the emergency services will show up if they have an emergency. We also gave a quote for what the same culvert and 14-foot wide installation drops it down to 30 for the accessory structures. The second company, there's what, same, they do the same exact thing with the recycled concrete and a two-inch top coat and a culvert, and that's what their price per linear foot is for putting in a service drive. We brought some examples of service drives that do not meet the code. Here's one that failed. Basically, it's the width of a pickup truck, maybe a foot on each side, about 10, 12 feet probably, so maybe two foot on each side. Some of these driveways, and this one in particular, if I'm remembering right, is about three-eighths of a mile back to the building site. So if our first fire truck in does anything other than, if they lay a line from the mile road, our tenders can get access and pump that line, but three-eighths of a mile, we don't have that much hose on one apparatus. So trying to get multiple apparatuses down these narrow driveways with hose lane in the middle of it becomes a problem, as well as additional apparatus cannot arrive, that they have to stage out on the mile road and the firemen have to pack up and carry all their tools and equipment from the mile road into where the residence is located. Here's an example of a turnaround that does not meet the service drive radius, and you can see the other trucks that have been delivering supplies to this residence tried to make the corner and ended up out in the mud, and they're no longer on the all-weather driving On the way back out, the same service drive, or this might be a different one, they got really, they've elevated it, but it's got really steep drop-offs to where if on ice or whatever, we slid the front or the back end of a fire truck off of this and get it high-centered, no other fire apparatus is going to make it down that road to get to This is one we just went out recently on and inspected, and it's about the same 10, maybe 12 feet wide, and as you can tell, getting off this roadway to pass another apparatus is going to end up with a large tow bill and trying to get an apparatus out of the yard due to the way the water stands. The other issue is the turnaround at the end of that driveway is also way too narrow, and there's, my pickup, I had to stop back up and keep going around it.
Is that new construction?
Yes, this one is a new construction. He has since corrected it and it's wider drive now. Here's another example of a one-lane, basically one-vehicle-wide driveway, and we also have, here's where some of the vertical clearance issues come in with hedgerows lining driveways, and what we would do is go out and meet with those people and ask them to kind of trim those things so we don't tear the lights off the top of the apparatus if we ever had to get down there. Compliance service drives, here's some examples of what we are asking people to do and what the code requires people to do. Here's a 20-foot wide drive with a simulated land, five-inch line down the roadway, there's still room on this right-hand side for other apparatus to get up a little closer to the scene, make it a little more quick response for second and third arriving units to get their equipment up to the job. Here's a compliance setback on a gate, where you see the engine has the ability to come off the mile road and get through there without making contact or damaging anything to get up the service drive. Here's an example of the 20-foot wide at the roadway, where you can kind of visualize the tire tracks and see how the apparatus have to make that creeping or swinging curve to get up in here, but this will also allow for, if a tender's leaving to go get water and another one showing up with water, they can both access this driveway and... This one shows the turn-in where the gate is, where he just drove through. And I'll be happy to stand for any questions you have.
Is that, is that attached to the gate or is that a real handle?
No, that's attached to the gate.
Commissioner Cruz wanted me to ask you that?
Making sure the clearance is wide enough?
Yes, because, because an example of what our, one of the issues with all this is our apparatus are DOT exempt. Our fire engines, like Engine 36, 7, and 8, and 33s at Mays, are 25 tons, or 50,000 pounds on two axles. Our big rural pumpers that were out of 31s and 39s weigh 63,000 pounds on three axles. So having some sort of an all-weather driving surface underneath them is the intent of the fire, of the service drive code, I'm sorry.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Timmons. Is there, respectfully, is there a problem here that you're asking us to resolve?
No, we were asked to present the service drive code and kind of give a background on it. on it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, thank you, Chairman. Just, so I understand, the only time you'd actually inspect these and have any type of enforcement would be, there's a signature sign-off, if you will, on the initial inspection on new construction.
Correct.
And after that, these are really held, these are left to the homeowner to maintain that standard if they, if they so choose, or if they don't do that, there's no reinspection or any enforcement options after that initial inspection, is that correct?
That is correct, sir. We do, on occasion, get a call from one of the fire stations saying, hey, we tried to get down this drive, sticks and stuff are scraping the side of the truck, and we'll go out, or send a letter. We try to go out first and catch people, and just have a conversation with them and encourage them to keep tree limbs and stuff trimmed up.
Very good. On the cost estimates, you said two-inch top coat. Can you, the top coat, is that a gravel top coat?
It could be a gravel, it could be a milled asphalt.
What was the, what's the estimate including here?
They did not give a detail on what they were putting on the very top surface.
Does this sound about right to you, David Spears, that this is two dollars and fifteen cents a square foot for six inches of crushed concrete, two inches of top coat, and a forty-six thousand pound compaction force? You didn't say, you said using linear foot.
Jim Weber, so, we haven't, we don't price these things. We don't have good comparable pricing for this, but I can tell you that the crushed concrete would be what I'd call a premium material, so it wouldn't really surprise me. But they're not requiring crushed concrete, but apparently the two contractors they talked to are using crushed concrete, so I think it's probably accurate information, but it's not. It is a premium material. We usually use it in a base, in our trailer roads, we like it there. It does make a very good road base, it probably makes a good road bed, but their options include rock, crushed asphalt.
I would consider this to be a low estimate, based on what I've, when I've talked with people, I think this is a low estimate. I mean, I don't think it's a high estimate, I think it's a low estimate. But I'm not a good judge of that, so I'm asking, you know, for your expertise, if you think I see...
I think we could go back and compare where we have bid, where we know we've gotten crushed asphalt as crushed concrete rather as a base material, we could probably look at some pricing that we get for that.
And they can just lay it on the ground, they have to compact it in and...
All of these materials should be compacted in with a, you know, probably a vibratory roller.
The prices that you have on the sheet, this is installed price?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to get the names of those companies, I'd like to discuss that with them, just to make sure I understand their bidding there, because that's not even close to what I've been, been told, so...
Okay, I have them, I didn't know. You want to do it later, or is it appropriate to give their name?
Give me the information later, I'll get a human call, that's fine. One of the comments I would make also is, we don't actually have any standards for township roads, not that I know of. I mean, if we do, that's also not being enforced, and there's people in my district that will tell you that getting to their home, there's not a twenty-foot-wide roadway, the road sometimes goes under the floodplain, there's water going across the road, there's drainage problems, there are obviously compaction problems, just to drive a vehicle like a car down that road would be impossible many times. So, you know, emergency vehicles getting to their driveway may be the bigger problem here, and that's, that's what's caused probably part of this conversation to come up, is we seem to not have any standards that we're enforcing in any way, in any way on township roads, and yet we have a very high standard on this private road, twenty-foot wide, and it could be a very long road. I mean, you talked about three, you know, two-thirds of a mile, or what you said earlier, some of these driveways out in the county can be very long, and you start adding that up. Somebody, there was one, one resident, I know that their driveway afterwards was a hundred thousand dollars, just for that, just for this, because it was so, such a high standard, but the road to get to the driveway is horrible. So, this brings up, you know, we talked about regulations, whether regulations make sense, this is an economic development discussion. I certainly want to have safety, I want people to get their, their emergencies, emergency providers to their homes when they need it, need it, that's, obviously support that, but what is reasonable? You know, I don't know that we needed twenty-foot-wide driveway for that entire length of the driveway for a, for a home, and to me, that seems a little bit excessive, and I think that we ought to be able to, you know, allow for, for passing areas perhaps along that driveway that's over a certain length, but trying to minimize the width of that driveway so that a vehicle can get down it safely would be a, would be a good standard for a residential driveway. I, I think we need to review this a little bit, because if a hundred thousand dollars is a, is a real thing, that is going to obviously discourage people from, from building homes in the unincorporated if that's, if that's the situation, so that's kind of what brought this up, and I have, I may have a few other questions, it looks like you have something you want to say, go ahead.
No, I just, I think it's something that if you wanted to work with the fire department and planning about stuff, then...
Reasons here before is that I have been working with them today, that's why, that's why we're talking about it right now.
But what's, what's the pressing issue that we all need to sit in this room and utilize all of our time to discuss this? I, you know, you know, does that make sense? Because to me, it seems like this is something that you're very passionate about, obviously, but does it affect all of us right now that we need to be discussing it for the past thirty minutes?
Well, I don't know where else we're going to discuss these things, this is our, this is our job, is to discuss these issues, but this is for my constituents, I have people who are challenging these regulations, saying, these are excessive regulations, and they would like to see us review this and bring it back into something more balanced, and I think they've got a point. I think that we have a very high standard for private driveways, and it's interesting to me that we seem to not have an enforceable standard on township roads. That's my bigger concern, is, is public safety getting to the homes in the first place on township roads. We don't, we don't seem to have a good handle on that, and yet we have a very high standard, a very expensive standard, and it's actually causing economic development decisions not to invest in, in, in building in the unincorporated because of one regulation that's extremely expensive, that may never be used. And again, I, I want people to have public safety, don't get me wrong, but a twenty-foot-wide driveway, for the length of the driveway, my opinion is excessive. And it sounds like you're, you're going to need, need to propose a compaction weight limit increase perhaps, I don't know if it's seventy-five thousand dollars, seventy-five thousand pound weight limit is going to cause a reconsideration anyway. I don't, you don't think you actually specified the turnaround size in a, in a PowerPoint today, but I don't know, that's another issue, the size of the turnaround. So there's a number of issues here, I think, but we ought, we have a very high regulation that ought to be reviewed, and we're going to minimize it so that you can access the homes, but not make it so expensive.
All right, maybe you could bring, just maybe the staff could propose, so you're really, you're concerned about the regulation requirements on driveways?
I think it's too much, and I think the township needs to be addressed.
Then that's, that's what could have been said, and we can have somebody bring us a proposal to change the, the standards on the driveways.
So, right, we've been talking about this now with staff for years, and this is the first time we've had a public meeting on it.
Okay, well...
So I, this is something I've been talking about and working on for a long time.
And I don't think we have jurisdiction over the township roads, right? So the comparable of that, I mean, it's, it's noteworthy, but we have no jurisdiction on the township roads, so if, if the issue is driveway regulations, then have somebody work up something and bring it to us, we have a public hearing and see what we can do, would be my recommendation.
Okay.
Yes.
The standard that we impose is less than the national standard already?
The weight, yes. It just changed with the two thousand eighteen international fire code.
So, it could be worse, if you went to the national standard, it could cost more.
That is a logical statement, yes.
I guess it's at the will of the commission to reconvene the stakeholders to review this entire code and...
That's a good idea.
...come back with recommendations.
Okay, I'd like to talk to, you know, people like builders and find out what their opinion is, the realtors, and see what they say. I'd like to see a review of what the national standards are, and see how this compares, and see if we're excessive in any area. Talk about the weight, but I'm not sure the national standards require a full twenty-foot width, twenty-foot width for the entire length of the driveway, for example. So I'd like to see how we compare with national standards and see, are we excessive in any area compared to them as well, so there's, there's some work that could be done here.
Chief, do we have any data on the international fire code and what the requirements are on the national level? Do we have any data?
I do not have any with me at this time.
Well, we will do that, we will look at national data, we will convene the local group, but at the end of the day, it comes down to what the commission wants, and we get W A B A, and we get some of the other people to weigh in, and I'll, we'll do some research on what our legal ability is to dictate township standards. I kind of agree offhand, I don't think we have any, but we'll research that component.
Okay.
Very good.
All right.
Fire has the podium, Chief Doug, you want to talk about liberal response very briefly?
Good morning, Commissioners Doug Williams, Fire Chief.
How you doing?
Good. We, we were requested on Saturday to send some equipment as part of a Sedgwick County Task Force to Meade to assist, they, they thought the fire in Beaver County, Oklahoma, was going to come across the border and, and get into Kansas and get into the Meade area. So we got a request on Saturday to send equipment as part of that task force, and we agreed to send one brush truck with Derby and Wichita Fire, and Mulvane, and Wellington, and some other departments all gathered up and sent a task force. They gathered at Saturday night and at Cheney, and then they deployed out, and they held them in Greensburg. On Sunday morning, then they deployed them on out into Meade, and at that time, the fire had not crossed the border, so they ended up getting deployed down into Beaver County, Oklahoma. Our fire units ended up down in Beaver, I believe it's the town of Beaver, I might be wrong on the town, but they ended up in the town that had lost several structures, and they were going around backfiring and checking fires in yards and around buildings, and because the resources in that area had been depleted, they were also running medicals and nine-one-one calls for, for the Meade, or Beaver Fire Department, so that was what they did all Sunday afternoon. They did get called out at one point because the fire kicked out of a creek and got a head fire going again, and our task force was part of the crews that stopped the secondary head fire from getting into Kansas, and Sunday evening, they were released and sent home. So that was the whole gist of what they did.
Well, thank you, that was quite windy this weekend, for sure.
Yes, it was, and, and, you know, one of the things that I, I think to explain the task force, it started about a year ago, maybe a little more than a year ago, two years ago would be more accurate. What they used to do, the Hutchinson Fire, a couple years ago, kind of spurred interest, they, they don't, they want task force to be formed now, instead of just everybody sending one truck or two trucks, they want you to build like county task forces and, and regional task forces, so you go and you operate and you work as a combined team with a team leader versus just everybody sending a bunch of resources, so that's a little bit of the task force concept.
That's encouraging, that's good to hear, thank you. Kansas solving Oklahoma's problems, Chairman.
Yes, we need to read for more north winds.
You bet.
Mr. Dennis, want to talk about Naco?
Thank you, sir. Last week, Commissioner Cruz and I took a trip to Naco. I brought back a whole stack of materials here that I was going to go through with the manager or one of his staff to distribute out to the different staff, but one thing we did before we went, Commissioner Cruz and I got set down and went through the schedule and tried to schedule ourselves so that we were going to different locations, rather than both of us attending the same seminars off and on during the day. Some of the highlights of the visit, we got to hear from a number of, of the cabinet members for the Trump Cabinet, and then towards the end, Colin Powell came, he autographed a book for each and every one of us, and I went over and asked him if they'd give me three more books, and I brought those back for each of the commissioners, so all five of us got a book on leadership. One of the things, I think, Tanya Cole has been through his Leadership Academy, and they talk highly about the Leadership Academy, and they do offer scholarships through Naco to go through that, so any of the other staff members that are interested in going through that, you can talk to Tanya and find out what it's about. But again, we went through everything from elections, security, health of your community. I brought back some stuff, Naco is working on issues, trying to get the federal government to continue Medicaid when a prisoner goes to jail. As a matter of fact, when President Trump was giving his speech, because one of the other speeches that was of significance was when President Trump came, he mentioned that he is working on trying to retain Medicaid for prisoners going to jail, and he got a standing ovation, and he, he made a comment at the end of that, he said, I didn't expect to get a standing ovation on that, but that, that's an issue that affects all over three thousand counties in the United States, and so it's something that every single one of us were interested in, and it didn't matter if you're a Republican or a Democrat, we, we have the same issues, and that was another advantage that I saw in us going, is that we got to speak to an awful lot of other counties and hear what their issues were, and believe it or not, their issues are exactly the same as our issues. There is no difference across the United States, really. Some of them have larger areas that are, have military bases or have national parks and so forth, so there is a payment lieu of taxes issue that some of the other states have some considerations on. They, the last day when we were there, we did go to the Hill, that afternoon, they had a seminar that I didn't make it to that deals with some of the ecological problems that they have with, with military bases, especially air force military bases, with some of the contamination that's come up, but again, that is something else that, that all the counties are working, so rather than belabor it, I wanted to make sure that Commissioner Cruz had an opportunity to talk about the trip.
Thanks, thank you. So, I was excited to have an opportunity to go to, one of the seminars was Using Arts to Heal, and there was a woman who talked about peace.org, peace love.org, and she talked about how there were two hundred and eighty graduates from Frank, the Franklin County Jail, and it was a program that has been designed for women as a start, and she said that not a one has cycled back through their prison system, and it's using arts to heal them, so that was kind of cool. The program saves around seven hundred thousand dollars a year, as far as keeping people out of jail, so I'd love to kind of look into that possibly. Cook County in Chicago has a ten-year plan to end homelessness, and they have over nine thousand folks who are homeless, so I thought it was very good to see somebody have such a goal, set a goal to end homelessness in their community. One of the other things was explorer.naco.org, which is a really cool interactive site where you can go on and find any sort of data that you want for counties across the nation. I had, I was on the ninth floor, and for three nights in a row, there was this party going on, and I'm like thinking that it was, you know, people being loud at the elevator, well, it turns out, the last night, I was like, I'm going to go join this party, and I went into this place, this, this suite on my floor, because I'm like, they're going to be partying, I'm going to party too, dang it. And so I go in there, and it's the, it's the Naco incoming president for next year, and I sat next to a commissioner from Nebraska, and we were talking about studies, and how many times have we all done studies? How much money have we spent on studies? We're just about to spend two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on an energy study. He talked about three studies that they had conducted that were over a million dollars. So I thought to myself, well, Naco is the organization for all counties in the United States, maybe we need to do a study of all the studies that have been conducted and have a database that we could put on explorer.naco.org. I told him I wanted to be a part of that committee. I said, if we're going to do that, I want to be a part of it, because I think it's important that we all understand what's happening across the, the United States as far as what studies they're conducting. Think of all of the money that our taxpayers are paying to have a study conducted for whatever reason. If we had access to their studies, understanding that, you know, we all live in different parts of the world, it's going to be different, the United States, it's all going to be different, but I think there is something to garner from that, so that was kind of cool. The other thing, I mean, I have a whole stack here too that I'd love to, to give to you all. I went to the local economics and the global market, and one thing that they talked about was, our, our companies that are here are looking at global markets. Our county should be looking at global markets too, and the interesting thing was that Sedgwick County is the fifth, the fifth weakest county in the United States that's the most globally engaged, so I thought that was really kind of cool, that we are actually ranking in the top five of all counties. I could go on, again, I don't want to labor it either, but it was... I could go on, again, I don't want to labor it either, but it was, it was just a really great experience. I have a whole stack of cards of people that I met from all over the United States, just doing all sorts of things that are just, I think, things that we could learn from. I'm especially interested in exploring Cook County and their, their plan to end homelessness. One final thing is I met a commissioner from Oklahoma City, who she represents four hundred thousand people. Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, they have, they have three commissioners, they do not have a manager, so those commissioners have a team that works for them to help manage their county. Just all sorts of ways that each commission body handles their, their county. But I'd like to make a trip down to Oklahoma City to kind, and I think we are actually for the city to city. So I think that's kind of important to see how they got their MAPS program going. I think it started in the nineties, it's something that she talked about being a chamber initiative, being a business community initiative. It wasn't sort of the governmental body saying, hey, we're going to pass this additional tax, it was the whole, getting the whole community involved, which is why their, their MAPS three passed with a seventy percent approval rating. So those are some of the things that I think this, this, in addition to all of the, the events that we were, we were able to attend, it was just the networking and the learning from our colleagues across the state that I wouldn't have had an opportunity. I can go on and, and look and, and read about all of these topics from my desk, I certainly can do that. But hearing firsthand and meeting all those people and learning from them, I think was the most valuable thing that I had an opportunity to garner from this trip. So I appreciate the opportunity, and I hope to go back next year, because I think it's something that we need to, we need to be involved in every single year as far as keeping up with the latest trends and data and meeting folks to see what we can take from their community and bring to ours.
Very good. Yeah, I'm glad, it sounds like it was a productive, productive trip. The vice president of studies is probably not going to be happy with their industry if you.
Hey, well, he actually, he actually was really excited about it, and he says that might be one of his platform pieces that he's going to talk about next year.
I'm, I'm really excited about this no manager deal down Oklahoma.
Well, then you have to do it.
Kidding.
Do they have a county attorney, or they can get rid of that too?
No more comments of any here, sir, we're, we're, we'll talk about COVID nineteen tomorrow at the meeting.
Okay.
Adrian will get up and.
Yeah, but I think the public is looking forward to hearing updates, because it changes, seems like changes daily. So, thank you. So I hope she's ready for us, for the, her presentation. Okay, anybody else have anything? Oh, yeah, the David Spears, no, 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 that's all right. Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, gosh, I didn't even get that, why would I look down?
Everybody, let's get to work.
It's really unfair, I didn't even get that. I see who your favorites are.
All right, have a good day, everybody.